...out tonight. I know we have some county basketball tournaments. This is a make-up meeting from the snow the other night, so we'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. We'll start out tonight with our prayer request list. We need to remember the family of Emerson Stockton who worked here, passed away. Need to remember Suzie Woodard's family as her mother passed away. We need to remember the family of Denise Bryant. She was in class of 1985, passed away today. This morning. We need to remember the family of Elsie Grissom, the family of Jean Culberth, which is a former bus driver Buddy Culberth's mother. And also remember all those sick with the flu and everything else that's going around. Are there any others we need to add to this list? And Scotty, he's continuing to improve, we just remember him as well.
Melinda Spivey?
Yes, we need to remember Ms. Melinda Spivey tomorrow, correct? When tomorrow's Tuesday, Wednesday, I'm used to being Tuesday meetings, Wednesday. Any others?
Unspoken.
If there are no others, we'll go to the Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you just thanking you for another day of life you've blessed us with. Father, thanking you for this school system that we have here in Smith County. Father, we just want to thank you for allowing us to come out tonight and make decisions for this system and pray, Father, that we always make the right decisions that best benefit this system. Father, we have many on our prayer request list tonight, and we just want to remember all those, Father, who have lost loved ones, or who may be sick or shut in, Father, or those having procedures coming up. Father, we just want to pray that you'll be with them, Father, whatever they need, Father, that you'll give it to them. Father, we just want to always be powerful for our country, especially right now, Father, for its leadership. Just pray that you'll give them the wisdom and knowledge, Father, to know that they have to work together to get things done, Father, as we do here. Father, we just want to pray that you'll give them that and help them to do what would be best for this country. Father, we just want to thank you most of all, as we do should be every day, Father, for your son and his sacrifice for us. It's his name we offer this prayer. Amen. Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start off tonight with a presentation. This is School Board Appreciation Week, and I believe Mayor Nesbit has a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Thank all the school board members. Before I read this proclamation, of course, just want to talk to you just a little bit. Thank y'all for what you do for all the children in our county. I can speak especially for my children. Y'all provided a good education for them. She was placed in a very successful education, both of them, very successful in their life, both of them in different ways. My daughter's turned out to be one of the best moms that I've ever seen, so I'm sure she was taught that by a lot of different people. But my son works hard, appreciate what y'all done for them. I've got a grandson that'll be coming up in this school system, so we're hoping that'll continue. I've got nieces and nephews that go to different schools in this county, so thank y'all for what you do. And I want to thank the school board, Mr. Smith and others that participate in our Career Day that we do each year jointly between the Chamber and the school and the county government. I think we're going to see that that is going to provide information for these boys and girls as they grow up and they get a job. I know last year we were really very, very successful. I think we had 72 vendors and/or school organizations there. They got to see what different jobs there might be available out there, and they got to hear from those people, what you've got to have to be able to come to work for us. So I appreciate the school doing that and being willing to do that. We're going to, I think this year's our third year. We had 1,500 students come through in a day. I mean, they told me it was going to do it in a day, I thought that won't never work, but it did. So I have been proven wrong many, many times. So thank y'all for what you do. But I know we were not able to do this last week because of the snow and ice and bad weather. But School Board Appreciation, School Board Week, Smith County Proclamation, whereas an excellent public education system is vital to the quality of life of Tennessee communities and to the economic development of the state. Whereas an excellent public education system is vital to the quality of life of Tennessee's communities and to the economic development of the state. Whereas school board members represent a tremendous resource as local decision-makers and diligently work to overcome the challenges of a changing world while providing students with the services and opportunities needed for a quality education. And whereas school board members strive to ensure that every student graduates high school prepared for college and workplace. Whereas school board members support and appreciate the efforts of students, educators, and administrators whose diligent efforts have led to Tennessee having the highest graduation record, rate on record. Whereas the men and women of our local school boards are elected by the people to make decisions most appropriate for their communities and deserve recognition and thanks for their countless hours of service to public education in Tennessee. Now therefore, I'm Michael Nesbit, Mayor of Smith County, here by the plan of week, January 21st, 2018, School Board Appreciation Week. And of course Gina, who brought this to me, thank you for providing that. And I signed it, but thank y'all for that. One last thing, as y'all know, I have announced that I am not going to be seeking reelection, so this will be the last time I'll get to present this to y'all. Y'all always open the door for me to be able to come in, and always been cordial in that. So thank y'all for what you've been able to do. It's been a pleasure to work with you. And I'll still be working through August 3rd, first of this year, so thank y'all.
Thank you, Mayor Nesbit. Thank you for what you've done for the county as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll give this to you as a problem. All right. Thank y'all.
Okay, we will move on to our second presentation. This is the Work Ethic Distinction, CTE. Ms. Spivey?
I just wanted to share some things that we know in CTE that I think are really good opportunities for our students. And since he's mentioned Career Day, and now that him and Mr. Woodard both are here, I just want to thank both of them. When we started the conversations around Career Day, that very first conversation that even introduced Career Day to our students, when I mentioned it to Mr. Smith, he was, you know, he was all on board, yes, 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 let's do this. And, you know, and so then I went to both of these men and asked them to join in with us for Career Day, and it has been a great opportunity for our students. So I want to thank both of them while we're here for jumping on board. When I said to them, I want to do this Career Day, and Mr. Smith has said I can do it, and I want to know if y'all want to be a part of it. They were both, yes, we do. So I really appreciate them being willing to jump on board whenever we ask them. And I appreciate Mr. Smith being all aboard whenever I ask him as well. So thank you all. At this time, I'm going to give you a copy. This is a draft copy, so when the final copy is finished, I can share that as well. But in CTE, in the upper Cumberland especially, and then in some other districts as well throughout Tennessee, we have introduced what's called the Work Ethics Distinction. And what this is, CTE students can complete a rubric, and the rubric is in the back of the packet, where they meet a set of standards and criteria. And if you'll look on the page that just has the standards, it tells what those students will be asked to do and will be scored on during their senior year. There's an attendance standard, and then there's an absence standard. And that absence standard is whether their absences were excused or unexcused. And then tardiness, discipline, their overall GPA, the drug-free standard, and that is obviously voluntary. If the students want points for being drug-free, they will initiate their own drug screen and take care of that. They'll just bring us back the document showing where their drug screen was negative. Their career, their CTE coursework during school, during their high school, the CTE completion, did they begin a program and end a program? Their Tennessee Promise Hours, if they got an industry certification in their CTE program, they'll get points for that. Enrollment in post-secondary, and that's, did they participate in dual enrollment while they were in high school? The ACT or the ASVAB score can be applied for the National Career Readiness Certificate, and then the Industry Awareness Standard. So the student during their senior year will take their own initiative. This is not something that we will stand over them and try to get them to do. If they want this distinction on their diploma or with their diploma, then they'll take the initiative to take care of this and get this completed and have the evidence. And once they have the evidence, then there are some businesses, and this front page is what we will present, or what I will present, when I go to business and industry, and we will have a memorandum of understanding between that business and our school system that says if the student, if the student scores high enough to earn the Work Ethics Distinction, then they will automatically be guaranteed for an interview for a job that they qualify. Now, it does not require them to hire them. It does not require them anything other than an interview in a position that they are qualified to do. And in the upper Cumberland right now, and the Work Ethics Distinction can go all over the upper Cumberland. So if a student leaves us and they have the Work Ethics Distinction and they go to Coval, to Tennessee Tech, there are Putnam County businesses on here where the student will take this distinction, and they'll know. And we will give the students a list of all the businesses. Right now, the upper Cumberland CTE directors are compiling a list of employers to give to these students. And right now, I have it somewhere, right now, these are the businesses that have already in the upper Cumberland, that have already said, yes, we want to participate in this. We are excited that you're providing students with this distinction. If they've done, it's a pretty rigorous set of, and they can't, and we won't likely have every kid to be able to do, you know, because they have to have really, really high scores in each standard in order to earn the distinction. So it's kind of prestigious to get it, and so businesses are saying, if you have a student who has earned this many points and can get this, we will absolutely give them an interview. So this is something that we're working on. We're providing it to our seniors, and I haven't presented it to them yet because I wanted to present it to you. And so, once they have earned the distinction, and then I will also reach out to businesses around us in our community and, you know, and ask them for a partnership as well. And once we get partnerships within our community, then I will add them to the list, and we will, and they'll get, the CTE department is going to make a little flyer like this one, so they can add their logo to their flyer that they send out. And Rutherford County and Wilson County, Rutherford County is doing it much like us. Wilson County is doing a separate, they're doing a Work Ethics Distinction, but they're doing a bronze, and then they're doing a gold. And if you earn the bronze, you did not take the drug screen. If you earn the gold, you took the drug screen. So lots of people are doing it different ways. I just chose to do it flat across the board. If you can, if you get these points, you're going to get it because you've met the standard. So we, well, like I said, now that I present it to you, I'll go present to both high schools and the seniors. It's voluntary. It's not anything that we are requiring them to do. It's not anything that we are asking teachers to do extra. It's something that I will do. I'm not going to ask teachers to run down the paperwork. The student will run down the paperwork, and then I'll be the one to verify it. I don't want teachers to have one more thing to do. I don't want guidance counselors to have one more thing to do. I'll do it. But I think it's something good for our students, so I'm willing to do it because I think it's good for them. So, Zima, have any questions?
You said you would go to the local businesses here.
I will, but if you see a business that you think wants to participate, absolutely just show them. You can show them that memorandum of understanding and hook them up with me, and I will go see them or communicate through email or whatever.
Well, Melinda, I think it's a great partnership, because I think it's getting their students to understand what their business is going to ask of them, which we're not doing that now. And I also think it will help our children, our young adults at that point, to have a leg up, to say, hey, that kind of does some better. Guaranteed an interview. So if you go in and say yourself, you've got a great chance of getting a job.
I was thinking about, when I was presenting, I was thinking, but the day I did the STEM tours, Mr. Campbell was our tour guide, and he said in the meeting, and I don't mean to quote you, Mr. Campbell, but he was like, we want people who can pass a drug screen and show up to work on time and have good attendance and have a good work ethic. And, you know, all of these are things that kids will have when they, when they leave us, if they've earned it, so.
They'll have proof of that to hopefully get.
Yeah, and we won't give it to them until it's been verified.
And the way that I'm understanding, it's not just one interview, but it's an interview with each one of those places.
Every company, yes, all of these people have said, if they earn that, we will, we will give them, if it's a job that they qualify.
Right.
Now, they can go in there and say, I'm guaranteed an interview. The company reserves the right to choose, you know, if they're qualified for the job or not. But yes, if their, if their minimum requirement is a high school diploma, and they go in there with a high school diploma and they have this, then they're required to give them an interview. And businesses, everybody that we've talked to so far has been like, yes, we absolutely want to be a part of this.
It's a win for both sides.
Yeah, yes.
Everybody like we are, you're looking for people.
Yes.
And if you know that they're going to have enough of a work ethic to work for this, you know that they've got something that is probably.
Right. Yeah, I think it'll be really good, and I think it'll be good for students. And it's something that, in my opinion, when a student, you know, we also just implemented the new CNA program, and 100% of our students pass their test. So those students, not only, you know, if they leave us and they have an industry certification as a CNA and they've met these standards, I think that would look great on their resume or their application for nursing school, or whatever, you know, they're going to go into later on. Does anybody else have any questions? All right, we will present this to all of the industry. I have a letter that I'm going to give to every, every one of the industry vendors at Career Day, so I'm hoping to get some partnerships on that day as well.
Thank you, Ms. Spivey.
Thank you. What are any extra copies of those?
Yes, there's some extra.
Let me type them again, otherwise. Okay.
Okay, let's move on to our consent items. Do we have a motion or our consent items?
I'd like to motion and consent items. I appreciate it.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. If they say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to our superintendent action, with a small list. Hope everybody had a chance to look at it. Now we'll move on to New Business A. This is a new policy, 4.211, Work-Based Learning Program. This is the second and final reading for this policy. We have a motion on New Business A.
Make a motion on New Business A.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gattenbach, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. If they say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New Business B. This is Policy Amendment 4.502, Parent and Family Engagement. This is also a second and final reading for this policy. We have a motion on New Business B.
Make a motion on New Business B.
Mr. Campbell, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. If they say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll go on to New Business C. This is Policy Amendment 5.106, Application to Employment and Adopt New Administrator Procedures 5.106.1 and 5.106.2. This is the first of two readings for this policy. We have a motion on New Business C.
Motion to approve New Business C.
Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Apple, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. If they say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll go on to New Business D. This is a bid approval for Chromebooks for Spade. We have a motion on New Business D.
I'll make a motion on New Business D.
Ms. Gattenbach, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discuss? If not, this involves money, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New Business E. This is a bid approval for gasoline. Do we have a motion on New Business E?
Make a motion on New Business E.
Mr. Campbell, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Now we will move on to Discussion A. This is our BOE, BOE Five-Year Strategic Plan. Turn it over to Mr. Smith.
Well, Gina, who's been working closely with the county, and she came up here with the board that day, and so I think we need to follow up on some of that stuff that we talked about doing. One was we talked about the possible launching and getting opinions of public and the public and the different municipalities out of county, parents, and then, what was it, Gina, the art, the logo, the countywide logo, wherever we said, I think we didn't follow up.
Agree with that. Now, we let the administrators and teachers look through this strategic plan.
We hadn't had a principal meeting yet, and we felt like we need to let them look at it first and stuff first, but we just don't want this to die. We felt like there's some really good things that they brought up.
Yes, that is a good reason.
Yeah, what would y'all like for the administrators?
Well, I would like the administrators, teachers to look through this. The administrators and teachers, principals ought to look through this.
Some of these suggestions.
Yes, I would.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I like the idea of the launching to make it short and have a couple, three questions and suggestions and see what the public, what they would be good to for the ER for the board.
Yeah, I would definitely like it. I don't know how you all want to conduct a search for the logo, how we need to do that, or if something needs bringing before the teacher or administrator, see what.
We might could use some kind of contest.
I was going to say, have a good idea.
How would they?
Maybe with their art teachers.
Okay, kind of let them decide how and what, kind of when, if you get, if yours is chosen.
I don't want to limit it to just art students, though.
No, anybody, yeah.
Anybody.
Yeah.
Because we have a lot of kids that are creative that may not necessarily be.
But I think you said that the art teachers kind of over, just.
Kind of over.
Funnel it through them, yeah.
Do we do it as, do we let them work as a team? Do we have a?
I think individual effort type thing would be good, because you just.
Just an individual.
Yeah.
I think individuals.
Participate some of them.
Yeah, because you're right, not everybody wants to participate.
And we run that by, you know, see what they think, see what the art teachers think. I mean, they might have a really good idea that we.
And we'll discuss it, if principals make it.
We also probably need to talk about whether it needs to be digitized, or if you're going to, you know, take a drawing and then have somebody professionally digitize it, but use the student's idea. Do you understand what I'm saying? They might not can make it.
Take what they come up with and maybe push that further with it.
Yeah, yeah, to polish it, you know, but.
The student's rendering and then.
Right, right, exactly. I think it'd be neat for whoever the student is that's chosen to get to work with a graphic designer to get to finish it up.
And we're sorry, we decided we'll go with one for logo.
You mean our tagline?
We don't need anything else.
No, we don't.
Just art.
This is just. Just art.
Just the. Just the emblem.
Yeah.
It would be neat if they came up with something.
I looked at one.
I think that really embodies us in county.
It took in everything.
Yeah.
If you look at it.
The teachers, the Lebanon, the fair, all the.
Got everything, she liked everything.
Same phrase.
Buy my butt cake.
Joe says you buy my butt cake. Joe says you buy my butt cake.
Buy the winner a butt, butt cake.
And going along with this, what else as far as our strategic?
Well, I think we need to look at that launching, but we wanted to get, with girl's permission, we wanted to get, we've got Fred Monson coming in, it got put up because of the snow. So, see Angel shaking her head back there, they're pretty stressed out right now. And Emerson was kind of a, I don't know a good way to say it, he kind of buttered everybody pretty good. That was what he was great at, so we depended a lot on him. And so we have to change some roles up there. Angel's going to have to get a whole lot nicer. So if we allow us to do that, we might put the launching off to the next and get her questions ready for a questionnaire. So we just didn't want to dive, because we felt like it was about it. Team things came out of that, that day.
I think that's one of the best things as a school board that we've done, is agree.
I agree.
So they'll probably be back in your packet next week, just to keep the conversation on going.
And hopefully we can make some headway if we have a principal's meeting about some plans about the logo.
And then if y'all want to have a meeting at some point and put some more specific goals or details in there, you might want to do that, because everything's kind of general.
Right.
I think that needs to come, I think we could develop that from the ideas that maybe we'll get from the teachers and the administrators. That's my personal thought, because I don't think we necessarily know the day-to-day. We can get the general picture pretty good, but the day-to-day is not something that we would know.
Get a good outline.
Yeah.
So you would actually like principals and administrators to do goals kind of like y'all did?
Well, to give, we kind of, I think we've provided a good outline, a kind of the direction, but I think they need to do the ABC.
Specifics.
Yeah, the specifics.
Specifics.
That's just my fault, I don't know.
Maybe show them what we actually came up with that day and say, what do you?
Or, and what do you need to implement? This is what we want, but what do you, tell us what you need to implement it. Because what I think they need may not be what they need. I don't know.
Anything else we need to discuss on the Five-Year Strategic Plan? If not, we will move on to our annual policy review. Anybody have any questions? No policies to review for December, so I hope we didn't have any. Okay, two reminders, or one reminder, don't forget by the end of this month, you have to sign your statement of disclosures. So, hope everybody's already done it. If you haven't, don't forget to.
If you haven't, you got an email today that reminded you to do that.
That is correct. And if you wait just a little bit longer, you get another email. It's not, it's free.
They are registered.
I got one, because I forgot.
Your registered letter.
Well, I'll ask you. Okay, and also, as a board, we want to thank everyone for everything that's sitting around this table. That's way far and beyond. We want to thank everyone for that, and make sure that gets out.
Everybody's goes and you some.
Right, just make sure that gets back to them, please.
And this card there.
Yeah, it was cute.
We, I think as board members, we appreciate these kinds of things.
I agree.
Can y'all take them home?
They're so precious. And of course, there's stuff all the way around the walls, too.
All the way around the walls. But we want to make sure, I hope to thank everyone for that. All right, is there any need for executive session?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would think you might want to consider a work session planned this year through 30 days and into the next day option. and land issue thirty days into the long date option.
Yes, we do need a work session. Probably, when does that, what's good for everybody?
We need it for next.
We need it, yeah, so we can take action. It needs to be probably a couple of weeks before the next. That way, we have a week to get it on the agenda and.
That'd be like two weeks from now.
Two weeks.
Because we're a week ahead of.
It'll be the fifth. Super Bowl's fourth. Monday. No, we can't. I'll be.
It's going to be a ballgame.
How is everybody on February sixth, the Tuesday, the Tuesday night?
We're going to have a ballgame. But if it's a home game, I don't know if I got a schedule.
Forgot about that. The county tournament, the middle school games.
What day that weekend, not by noon?
Monday's Wednesday.
What we got next week? Next Monday?
Why can't you do it the fifth? I mean, can you do it the fifth?
Mm-hmm.
About February the fifth, Monday.
Is everybody good with the fifth? I think the middle school tournaments will be over this week.
Saturday, I think.
So, that.
The sixth is a home game, so, I mean, five o'clock on the.
Middle school tournament over the night, Saturday.
I mean, we can limit it to an hour, I mean, five to six, we can limit, so it don't get.
Could we, could we do it, can everybody do it at four thirty? Does that push you too much, Brian?
It pushes me.
Too much?
Yeah, I will be off.
Well, if I, I, we'll just do it at five, and if I have to leave early, then I'll just.
Who, where's it, did you look at the game right?
It's here, Decaf.
Is everybody good with six o'clock, I mean, five o'clock on the sixth?
On the sixth or the fifth?
The sixth.
The sixth.
The Tuesday.
There it is on Tuesday.
Is everybody good with that? I mean, I'm flexible if there's going to be an issue. Is that good with? We'll just plan on February sixth.
The Tuesday. Had me just.
February sixth, five o'clock, work session.
Not the Monday.
Be discussing. Okay, there's nothing else. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Manning, hold on, if I ever say aye.